Time is 6:02 and this is the Acushnet Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on our YouTube channel. And also live tonight via Zoom. And probably able to watch it on cable as well. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Motion to open.
Hang on a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four in attendance and we have one member on via Zoom. So can we please all introduce ourselves?
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Brian Deschamps, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
Dave Wiggman, member. Mr. Chairman, point of order, everything has to be roll call.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is, there are no minutes to review. No correspondence. Can I get a motion to open the public portion, the public hearing portion of this meeting, please?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Public hearing portion of this meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Member Steve Boucher.
Mark, yes.
Brian Deschamps, yes.
Rick Ellis, yes.
Dave Wiggman, yes.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I want to read what was posted. This meeting is held in accordance with chapter forty A, section five, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to amend article eight, the zoning bylaw, the town of Acushnet, general bylaw, by adding to section three, use regulation and new subsection three point three point seven, special residential development over fifty-five housing. Purpose of this special residential development, special permit, are to grant relief in the form of increased density to encourage housing needed in the town of Acushnet, such as providing alternative housing for a maturing population, providing a type of housing which reduces residents' burden of property maintenance and which reduces demand on municipal services. For the purpose of this bylaw, the term special resident development is defined as a residential development of multiple dwelling units, indicated as attached or detached single-family dwelling on a tract of land in single ownership. The accompanying documentation that are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, parting with building, one thirty Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. Now, this is our second public hearing regarding this article. During the first public hearing, we were presented with the article from the board of selectmen. The planning board deliberated, went back and forth, changed a few things, asked some questions. We actually had a second meeting, which was via Zoom and we went over all the changes. All the changes have been available to the public for over three weeks again at the town clerk's office. This is the second public hearing for the over fifty-five. I am not going to go over the entire bylaw again. But first I'm going to ask the board if they want to discuss anything, if they have any questions to come up with, and then I will go to the audience and Zoom. When you wish to speak, please stand up, your name, your address, for the record, please. Gentlemen, we went over this a few weeks back. Like you saw, we've made some changes, went back to the selectmen, they made some changes. We've agreed to their changes. Nothing's been added or changed since our last meeting. Do you have any comments or concerns?
I do have a couple. I'd like to reserve those comments until after we hear from the public.
Okay.
I'd like to wait too.
Wait?
I'm going to wait.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the people here in person, the residents here. Would anybody like to comment on the article twelve, special residential development over fifty-five? Stand up, please.
I'd like Rob Gomes, twelve eighty Main Street.
Okay.
I haven't reviewed it in depth, but I reviewed it enough to say that I understand it. I understand the validity to it, the motives behind it. However, I don't see the urgency to pursue this now. I don't see any specific pressure from the state in reference to forty B housing or anything like that. I also know the state has given a lot of towns grace on that. I don't see any evidence of any studies or census that's been done to inform us of school-aged children that are up and coming. Our schools are already at capacity. I know we're talking about over fifty-five housing. But that's a mask because a lot of folks, older folks in the town, are going to move into this over fifty-five housing justifiably, right? And then families are going to fill their homes, you know, their larger homes and everything like that. And, and it's not saying that the town can't accept low-income housing. I just feel like we're streamlining a process that's level the shooters in the foot. I think that you could have a floodgate opened and a population explosion in the town that can't afford that. And I also think that, I want to emphasize, I'm not opposed to this sort of housing, but it's been done before and there's a process in place where it gets specific attention, specific consideration, and it's on an individual basis. I don't think that we should be creating parameters that someone could fulfill on paper with engineers and everything like that. And I know there's other things to go through, but there's an understanding that they'd bad approval when they do this. Because we're spelling it all out and I don't think that it's, I don't think it's appropriate for the town. We got a very, a variety of neighborhoods and concerns from one part to another. And each area, each proposal needs to be looked at individually.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was a lot there. First, there is no forty B in this proposal. Nobody's ever mentioned the word low income. Nobody's ever mentioned the word forty B. There's not one word in here that says anything about forty B or low income. Affordable. Nothing affordable. It's for fifty-five and over. Fifty-five and over. That's what this is for. People who age out of their houses to go to either, you know, their kids are gone. They sell their homes, like you said, but people do that naturally and they sell their homes. This way they can stay in the town that they've been in forever. They grew up in. This, this is basically to put parameters on something. This is not something that was just put together in a back room somewhere. This was taken from what Rochester uses. They've been doing it for a long time. They've got stuff going up now. They get a lot more land than we do, so there's a slightly different. This was tweaked a little bit to more confirmed to this town. As far as kids, yeah, people of fifty-five, some people at fifty-five have kids still. Yeah, this is going to be the most two-bedroom. So how many big families with multiple kids are going to want to buy something that, even if they are over fifty-five, that has multiple kids with only two-bedroom? Unless you're going to jam three or four kids in a room? Yeah, it's possible.
No, the point I made was they would be selling a home that they have. Okay, a three-bedroom or four-bedroom in the town.
But wouldn't that happen, wouldn't that happen naturally though? Wouldn't that happen if somebody, so if you're, if you're age, if you're older, if you're fifty, sixty, seventy years old and you want to downsize because your house is too big, you wouldn't naturally sell your house to downsize and go somewhere else if you, even if you can't afford your house or to maintenance of your house?
But it's a bit, so we're not, we're not creating fifty-five and older because there'll be less kids. Kids are going to fill the houses they leave is the point I'm making.
But that's, I understand what you're saying.
So we're encouraging them to sell their homes. We're encouraging this to happen and this population to increase. And so if we're doing this, we're proposing this and underlying, we're not considering the other thing that's around the corner, which is the low-income housing around the train and everything like that. Well, then perhaps it shouldn't be considered at all because there's a lot on the fire right now.
We're not proposing anything with low income at the moment. And we don't know if we're going to be mandated to do so. Most likely.
But if we are, it's going to increase the population again.
And again, if we're mandated by the state, we have no choice.
That's right. And at that time, you can put a request for proposals and you can use these same guidelines for it.
Just, just so that you're aware, currently we have a bylaw for fifty-five and older in town. It's in effect right now.
Yeah.
Okay, with no parameters. So this bylaw puts parameters on it, okay? And it makes, it gives some uniformity to the fifty-five and older community housing. What's on the books right now, it is, there's no uniformity to it. It would be held on an individual basis. There is no land size. There's a lot of things that are not in there. It's literally fifty-five and older and approved by the zoning board.
I think that's fine.
I think that works a lot better. We need to change the townwide zoning.
You wouldn't want parameters to the size of the house, the amount of, the amount of dwellings that go on a certain size.
That's what we rely on you for.
But that's, but we, but that's what we're doing.
But you're doing it on an individual basis.
You can't do that. You can't just say what's good for you. Excuse me?
Doesn't this open the entirety of the town to these changes you're proposing?
No, this is only for two districts right now.
Residential A and?
Residential A and.
Isn't that a residential area? Why would you bring a business into a residential area? Because that pretty much is a business, the housing.
Not necessarily.
Area.
It's not a housing. It's not a business.
Well, who's running it?
Yeah, who's running it? Who owns it?
Yeah.
Who's generating the revenue from it?
In a residential area.
If we're talking about the mill property, that's not an individual home one person owns. That's going to be a business. The city's not going to own it, right? That's going to be a private entity that owns this and makes money. And as I understood from my conversation with the selectmen earlier, not the one present, this would involve a restaurant, a Walgreens potentially, and some other commercial entities that was in the plan at the time. He said that it seemed like a great idea. Who's going to manage all this? That does sort of sound like a business stuck inside of a residential area.
Okay, so now you're bringing up a proposal that was proposed a couple of years ago. It's, nothing's been set, nothing's been approved.
That's kind of the problem, I think, we're all concerned about.
What is?
We're changing all these bylaws for no reason other than, as I was explaining to me, the threat is with the T coming in, we're a T community, which I don't believe we are technically. The T doesn't come here. I understand it goes next door. The idea is we're doing this so that they can't come in and force forty B on us, which isn't accurate because this isn't ten percent of the population or housing. This doesn't create five hundred units. So forty B could still be forced on us even if we do this. So why are we wide opening these floodgates to allow all these changes with no planning? We don't even have a planning agent, as I understand it. I've called every office in town and no one can answer my questions. As I spoke to the town administrator, he said there's absolutely no way to control or police this inside the town. We could take people to housing court if they violate the fifty-five plus. How's that going to work? We don't have any controls on that. If you rent it and you rent, and then you let your niece or your daughter or someone else move in and there's six people living in that house, how do you get them out now? If the rent's being paid, where's the stipulations? Where's the plan to get this out? The other big thing is this is good for us. This is going to reduce burdens on the town. This is not going to reduce the burdens on anything. And I don't really believe there's that big of a fifty-five-plus population that's in a big rush to sell their house and buy a new house in another area with HOA fees, as I was told. So you're telling me you're going to sell your fifty-year-old house and buy a brand-new house in a brand-new development at eight percent interest at the highest point we've ever seen in the real estate market to downsize and save money that still has a lawn, that still has all these demands? And you're going to lower my taxes by doing that? How much are we talking? I don't really think my taxes are that high for what I get in this town. I don't have a problem with my taxes the way they are. No one's actually saying these are the benefits you're going to get. They're just saying this is what we should do because if we don't, they're going to force us to do it, which really doesn't hold water.
I don't know where you heard that from, but that's not coming from the planning board.
Yeah. I, I understand. I haven't spoken to you guys about it, but when you speak to the selectmen and the people behind this, that's the, if we don't do this, they're going to push this on us. So we better do it now and set these criteria so they can't do it. The two don't go together. They don't make any sense from a reasoning standpoint.
Mr. Hinckley, you had to hand up.
Mr. Chairman, just for some clarification, Bob Hinckley, board of selectmen. I was, I was able to confirm at about four-thirty today with town council, we will be absolutely one hundred percent considered an NBT A adjacent community once the stations are built in New Bedford. There's criteria based on that where essentially any but in town has to have a certain percentage of what they consider multifamily house. That's actually the first line in their criteria. Multifamily house has to be, or affordable, as you know.
That's the, that's the low income that everyone's concerned about because it does say affordable.
Yeah, but affordable now doesn't really exist, so it's just.
This doesn't say affordable. This says fifty-five and over.
The main focus of the MBTA community is to provide multifamily housing. And their requirements are ten percent of the town has to, has to be ten percent of the population in the town.
Correct.
So just for confirmation, I did find out from town council today, hundred percent set in stone. We will be considered an adjacent community by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Also, that came up today, well, you also brought it up, was how do we control this? How do we, how do we make sure that he buys it, he's over fifty-five? He dies, his kids want to sell it. Okay, so I needed that answer as well, so I reached out to town council today. Town council, I was hoping would be on Zoom tonight, but unfortunately, due to the short notice, he had a prior commitment and couldn't be on Zoom. And I wanted him here to answer these questions. But from what I got from town council today is you, there would be a covenant on every deed, on every title. That covenant would state whatever we want it to state, which basically is, hey, you're going to be over fifty-five to live here. Now, is the covenant rock solid? No, it's a covenant that's attached to the title in perpetuity. So it stays no matter who sells it, who buys it. He dies, his kids want to sell his property, they have to sell to somebody over fifty-five.
Now, what happens three years down the road, you can't sell that property and it goes vacant? And what do we do? Do we take it back? Like what if?
We don't take it back. We don't own them.
But that's what I'm saying. So how do we control this? And say he sells to some, but say somehow this gets abused and neglected. What are we going to do on an individual basis?
There will be a homeowners association. There's a homeowners association that has to be designed for that development. That homeowners association also.
How much does that cost per house?
That depends on the developer. That depends, depends on the size of the.
Shouldn't we know all this before we push this forward or shouldn't we get some indication?
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that interest you if you were going to buy it? If you're not going to buy it?
I wouldn't buy anything with a homeowners association.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I've never heard of those going down, just like taxes. They don't go down.
Well, that's, that's your prerogative, but if you're, if you want to buy it, well, you don't have to paint the front of your house. You don't have to cut your grasses.
But you pay the HOA fee that covers all that and when all of them need roofs, those go up. I've never heard of.
Again, that has nothing to do with you unless you go to buy it. But somebody else might actually want that.
I, I understand that, but what, how do we enforce this? What, what is the recourse if this gets violated? Does the town go and sue this person?
Well, all right, let me ask you, let me ask you this. So you own one, he owns one, he owns one, and he owns one. So there's four units, four units in one, okay? Now, all of a sudden, it starts to go bad or, or you know, needs to be painted or the grass isn't being cut. Okay, you don't care, but they care. So they go to the homeowners association and say, hey, I live here, I pay my, my fees. I want my yard cut, I want my snow shovel. I pay for these things. So that's how, that's what an association is for. And then if you don't, they have the right to sue.
And then it becomes mostly.
What, what particular town did it go back?
Bridgewater. There are tons of condos where they did this in Bridgewater and I can't think of the specific name. If you want, I can pull it up on my phone. But it got to a point where it was less than the minimum criteria of owner occupied, so people couldn't even sell their condo units in there. There was nothing they could do and it just went downhill faster and faster and no, no controls. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here. I'm just saying the government has presented a clear-cut way of prohibiting that. They're just saying, hey, let's do this so we don't get in trouble with this. But I don't think we're going to hit ten percent of the town population with these two developments.
The way I see it, pardon me, if this doesn't address any of these other issues that we're going to be faced with ultimately, why are we even talking?
Yeah, why, why do this to stop something that it's actually not going to stop?
It's not going to help us in any way.
It's like stopping bleeding on a wound that doesn't exist yet.
Point of this is.
Turning it on a non-wound. I don't get it.
What you don't seem to understand is there is a very small sentence that allows people to come in and do whatever they want.
For your approval?
No. No!
Where is this sentence that you're, can you?
It's in the bylaw.
It's under, it's in the bylaw, but it's under, it's under the zoning board of appeals. And they've already just done one, right in the center of town.
Right in the center of town, four units.
I don't think this, I don't think there's an acre of property there.
Yeah, and there's no, that's what I'm saying.
And they just put four, they just put four units. They're going to be putting four units in. Green Kay's in Garfield.
Hi, my name's Anita Davis and I live at fifteen twenty-eight Main Street of Acushnet. I live on the other side of town, right where it was zoned just for farming. Zoning came in, made it residential slash farming without any of us knowing. And it was farmland for a century. Wasn't even a part of Acushnet. I'll give you a little history lesson. It was called High Point at that time. Wasn't even part of Acushnet, okay? So let's, let's talk about this, this development going in on conservation land. Because I've ridden horses all my life in this town since I was fifteen.
I just, I just, I'm not, I need information. What development are you talking about?
We're talking about behind flying clouds.
There's nothing been approved. Nothing at all.
Nothing been approved? Well, that's the good news.
Nothing has come in front of this board about anything.
Okay, because I'm here for my friend Sheila Fogren and Mark Fogren. And they have, you know, put my name out there because they know that I get heard. So that's why I'm speaking up. They're not here, but I'm here for them.
Okay.
And so when that comes up, you know, I just want to be ready because I'm going to do my homework and research on that land.
I hope you do. I honestly hope you do.
I will.
Good.
Because these developments, right, we've already got traffic problems. We don't have one light in this town, not one blinking light, not one red light. All we have is stop signs. We have children. I don't have any children, but I pray that the children of these families do not get hurt. We've got people speeding on James Street and John Street, right? They're making cut-throughs and you want to put developments up into this town? You're making a big, big mistake and that's all I'm going to say. You're asking for, to widen our roads. Our taxes will go up. Rochester's already complaining, so if you think that's not failing, it is. You might want to do your homework with Rochester because that development is not going to succeed. That's going to be another headache. So I'm just advocating for the normal.
And that's.
And I'm sixty-seven, by the way, and I would never move into some kind of unit like that. I would never move into a unit like that.
That's your prerogative.
Right, and there's a lot of us out there like that.
That's fine. As far as Rochester's concerned, I doubt Rochester's going to feel the pain. It's the developer that's going to feel the pain. It's not Rochester that's building those. Rochester is allowed to build them.
Rochester has to answer all the nine-one-one calls and the medical emergencies and build new schools and deal with all that and deal with the traffic so much as there is going to be.
One of the pains, one of the reasons.
The developer is going to get the money.
Excuse me, excuse me.
The developer gets the money and walks and then the town has to handle it.
No, the town doesn't have to handle it. But one of the reasons why we, it is fifty-five and over is because you don't want an influx of families with little children. What are the, what are the odds? How many people, I'm not saying it doesn't happen. How many people do you know that are over fifty-five, sixty years old, that have a bunch of toddlers running around? That want to buy.
Grandchildren. Let's.
And then someone gets a different person and they're just visiting. There's nothing wrong with grandchildren coming to visit grandparents. There's nothing wrong with that.
But they're still there.
There's a lot of grandparents now and we're all aware of this that are raising their children's children. They're raising their grandchildren. There's a lot of that going on, more than ever.
I'd like to say something.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
How much land do you guys own?
Introduce yourself.
How much land?
See, what is your name, sir?
How much land?
Two acres.
How much land? All right, so for instance, you guys are paying taxes. Are you going to build a little house on that land?
We're not allowed.
All right, so what you ought to do is get the town to buy all the land that isn't being used so you can use it yourself. Wouldn't that be a great idea?
That's called conservation.
Because, listen, I own a lot of land. I don't know what to do with it. I can't afford the taxes. But you know what? It would be great if you paid something, you paid something, you paid something, right? And everybody can share the land and we can do what we want with the land. Everybody can use it and the town will be so happy and it'll be so peaceful. And you know what? You can run your horses anywhere.
Where? Who owns it?
I'm Ray White from White's Farm Dairy, but you know what? We own a lot of land.
Yes, you do.
And guess what? You cannot afford to pay the taxes.
Conservation.
So you have to do something with the land.
You put it in conservation.
If you do something with the land, it's because they have to. Because you can't afford to own farmland. Why do you think the farmlands are gone?
I know, I own a farm.
I know, I know. How many, how many acres do you have?
Eleven.
Eleven, but it's considered farmland.
Exactly.
Right, so you get a big discount.
But Bob's the one that told me.
Some of us do. Some of us do. So people have to do what they have to do with the land.
Exactly, but you can.
And but everybody wants to tell everybody what they can do and what they can't do.
That's not exactly it.
And I don't, that's right. I didn't know what you're saying.
Excuse me, this is getting carried away. Mr. White? Mr. White?
I did it, but over fifty-five, it's not a bad idea.
Mr. White?
It's not. My concern mainly is.
I need one at a time. I need one at a time, please.
I'm going to do it at my back door.
I need one person to speak at a time. And you did introduce yourself, record, and then we can get to everybody at one at a time. I understand this might not be for you, for you. It might, you might not agree with it and that's your right. That's your right. The biggest thing, the biggest part of this that you need to understand is that, right? This is, just like we, last meeting, we did a solar bylaw, okay? We had one, but it was very thin, very weak, kind of just allowed whatever to happen or whatever. So then we put in a new bylaw for the solar bylaw and put regulations for the solar bylaw. Regulations, we can't stop the solar, solar fields from going in, but we can regulate it. There weren't any regulations, we added regulations. Same with this thing. There, anybody can come in and do what they want. And then when they get the state involved and it's forty B, we have no say.
I thought we weren't talking about.
We can go to sleep. No, we don't. We're not, we're not talking about that.
But we're using.
What Mr. White's saying is eventually people like him, who have a bunch of land and can't pay their taxes, are going to go forty B or going to do something to get rid of that land. But if we can give him an option that doesn't have forty B, that doesn't have a slew of kids, that doesn't put a huge burden on our schools, this is it. If he's going to, and I'm just pointing at you, sir, just as an example. If this gentleman or anybody else who owns privately owned land that's been paying taxes on it, they can do whatever they want with it. We're just trying to put guidelines.
That's not necessarily.
That's not true.
I have a retreat lot. I can't even put a shed on my property because it'll be too close to the borders.
If you have frontage, I understand. If you have the frontage, if you have the acreage.
So why are we reducing the lot size so instead of one house per acre and a half, they can put three per acre? I don't understand the need for that. If you've got so much land, you need to get rid of some of it, put houses in that like we've been doing. That's been a nice, slow, steady growth.
That's right.
It doesn't seem to get hurt anyway.
So if Mr. White or somebody else like Mr. White owns a hundred acres and in the farmlands out way on the back, you'd want fifty houses out there with a bunch of kids all over the place? You prefer that?
I prefer that.
Why? Why? Well, that's what puts the burden, you're just saying.
You were just saying.
We're just saying you don't want the burden on the, the schools and everything else.
Those houses will generate tax revenue?
And this doesn't?
I don't think it's going to generate it the same amount. Plus those families will want better schools, newer schools.
So now, now we're going to go building schools, going to do all that? And that's what you were just saying you didn't want?
No, I never said I don't want that. I don't think that this proposal helps us do that in any meaningful way. And I think there's a lot of cart in front of the horse with this and there's no restrictions or no policing involved with it. And we're just like, well, we should do it just in case. I would have no problem if he has a hundred acres and he wants to put a house every acre. I'd have no problem with that. I would have no problem, if he has a hundred acres, and he wants to put a house every acre, I'd have no problem with that, because it's gonna sell and generate tax revenue, just like every one of our houses does. However, I don't think we should make it so they can put three houses per acre, that really doesn't benefit the town.
Excuse me, do you know how much it costs to put one child through school?
In this town?
In this town.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, so who pays, if you have three kids, who's paying thirty-six thousand dollars a year in taxes?
What happens if these go in and they bring in three kids?
So we end up taking off the burden, the people without.
Mr. White, Mr. White, again.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, just wanna clarify something real quick, um, to put it straight out there. Right now, if you had a hundred acres and you wanted to build whatever you want, you have to make four friends on the zoning board of appeal. With this bylaw, you'd have to go through multiple committees and boards, and each special permit can have orders of conditions attached to it. So ultimately, the planning board can say, we don't like this about this, we don't like this about this, so it is a lot more fine to it. It's as simple as the current bylaw for fifty-five and older, if somebody requests it, shows the planning boards a set of plans, they say, you can't do this, they say, okay, I'll be back after I get my variance. They walk into the ZBA, the ZBA decides that, okay, we could use this, they can literally approve the variance, and then they can build whatever the variance calls for. This just controls, it puts the ball in our court, it takes it away from four people, and I'm not knocking the zoning board of appeals, they are, actually do a good job. But, you never know, it's a lot easier to convince four people than it is to convince two complete committees, along with peer review, with orders and conditions from not only planning, but conservation. And regardless, regardless of how you vote, the, you guys all run the town, we're just stewards. Regardless of how you vote, it doesn't really matter to me, because I want everybody to be happy, but there, there's so much misinformation going on right now, clarification. It's as simple as reading this, read it a lot, and focus on what we had as a bylaw. The orders of conditions means that the planning board can set extended rules and regulations to this, they don't have to abide by this to the D, because they can actually say, okay, there's not, uh, there's too much wetland. Even though you have the acreage, you can only build this many units, you can only build this many houses, right now, we don't have that control, or they don't have that control. I know it's a lot more in-depth than that, as of right now, no matter what, any single person that wanted to do something like this would have to apply for a special permit and start the whole process. So it's not like anything's in the woods, in the wings, already happening, with a certified letter waiting to go, where this passes, and all of a sudden, there's fifty houses behind us. That's impossible, it, it's, there's not a single development or process on record right now that wouldn't have to apply for a special permit through a new bylaw. I just wanted some clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, I appreciate it. Um, just to try to keep this meeting moving, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your concern. Is there anybody else that has anything else that we haven't discussed, that they would like to discuss tonight? Let me go to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that has anything to add to the over fifty-five article?
Hey, good afternoon, I don't know if you can hear me, my name's Amy Gordon.
I can hear you, where are you from?
Oh, thanks, Seven Heritage Road.
Okay.
I put in the comments in Zoom the questions I have, do you want me to read them out loud, or can you see them?
No, we cannot see them, please read them one at a time, please.
Thank you, uh, so the first, and, and I just wanna clarify, I'm a lay, I, I don't know anything about housing and zoning, so I've done a crash course for the last two days. Um, and so, these are just questions that I think the population in our community probably needs some clarification on, and I apologize if you've already done it, but I think it merits a review. So the first question I'd like your board to answer is, can you please define the term affordable housing per the Massachusetts guidelines?
Why? We're not discussing affordable housing.
Well, I think that term is what's being bandied about in this conversation, and I think that is part of our understanding of how these bylaws are going to help our community.
I understand that, but I've read this, and I'm not gonna, I don't, there's nothing in here that says affordable housing. This is for people over fifty-five years of age.
Okay, um, I, I respect that answer, um, but again, the conversation that I'm hearing people have here on this meeting, and also on social media, is that these bylaws are going to somehow control a developer and entice developers to develop without using the chapter forty B affordable housing program. That is my understanding, and if it is incorrect, I'd like to be corrected, however.
That is incorrect, and, I mean, I know a lot has been going around on Facebook and, and social media. This, right now, this isn't gonna entice a developer, actually, this might deter a developer, because right now, a developer could come in with no regulations and do whatever they want.
And why haven't they done that so far?
Yeah. And, and nothing's saying that when this goes through that you're gonna have a, a slew of developers coming in. We, we have nobody pushing this for development, this is just something that we don't have, that we need.
Okay, why do we need it? Can you please repeat that for the community? Why do you feel these bylaws are going to help protect a Cushinget residence? Clearly, there are a bunch of what we call NIMBY, not in my backyard, um, you know, individuals, that don't want developments in their backyard. So how is this bylaw going to stop or prohibit or deter developers from coming in and developing unwanted developments?
The only thing that this article does is give this board, or the town, cuz we work for you, gives us the ability to control a project. The way it is now, we have no ability. That's the reason behind this one, behind the last solar one, behind a lot of them, is to give control to something we have no control over at the moment.
That, I, thank you for that answer, I do appreciate it. Um, in regards to the, and I know you don't want me to bring it up, but I'm gonna bring it up again because it is floating out there, the chapter forty B and what was mentioned at the beginning of the, um, meeting, the forty A and BTA multifamily zoning requirement, both of those will override the bylaws that you're proposing today. So I'm not sure if, if, that is if, a developer materializes and wants to use either the forty A or forty B chapter, is that correct?
I don't have any information regarding forty B, there is nothing tonight regarding forty B. If there's something coming down the line regarding forty B or affordable housing, I don't know anything about that, I know that because of the MBTA, that there will be, possibly will be something coming. Nothing has come across my desk, I can't answer something I do not know. All I can say, only thing I can say is that this is for people aging out, that are fifty-five and over, that want to downsize their house and go into something smaller. That's what this is designed for.
How much of a demand for that is?
That's fair, and I appreciate that answer, thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
We seem to be addressing an issue that we don't even know how much of a demand there is for this, but we're creating a bylaw?
Again, it, it.
So I guess that the forty B thing, to clarify, Mike Maluski, one twenty member of the road, the forty B thing, and when I talked to Bobby and a few other people in town, they said, we're doing this so they can't do the forty B.
I never said can't.
We're doing this so that we have some controls.
What I just, what I just mentioned, gentleman like Mr. White, has a lot of land.
Yeah.
Doesn't wanna pay the high taxes, wants to do something with it. This is an option for him to go where there is no forty B. If you don't give him an option.
There's other options, that family's developed land before, there's other options.
There is other options.
With a hundred acres, you can do something nice.
He's trying to put a solar farm in, and they're trying to stop it since twenty nineteen, but people, they're trying to stop a solar farm.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we're not going there, anybody else out in Zoom, please?
No, oh God.
Anybody else out in Zoom?
Mr. Chairman?
I was wondering if you were still out there.
Uh, Dean Zivikman, member of the planning board.
Please.
Um, yes, I have several thoughts, um, one is, there's so much misinformation being posted by one person on social media. It's a shame that people just read and, and believe everything being said, I believe that, that's being driven, um, with ill intentions towards the town of Cushinget, and certain members of the town of Cushinget that run the town that that person has a vendetta against. I mean, I'm gonna throw out quite a few things here, um, try and do it nice and slow so everybody can understand, uh, what my points are. Uh, one of the things that I understand, that was thrown out there was, uh, Hermitage Lane, if I'm saying it right, or Heritage Lane, I'm sure it's the Amish street. That there was a concern that there, this kind of development would be placed, um, on a parcel of land that ends at the end of that development. One of my comments, when this bylaw was presented to me, was that, uh, first comment I had was it should be a lot that complies with zoning for buildability, which means you have a hundred fifty feet of frontage, sixty thousand square feet to begin with, and the lot at the end of, uh, Heritage, if I'm saying it correctly, is a retreat lot. I don't believe any retreat lots should have this kind of development, because retreat lots are already, uh, granted a waiver, if you will. For big, for being a bigger lot, they got a waiver for less frontage, that's how the bylaw was developed. So that lot would not qualify, uh, in and of itself, in its current condition, as a develop, uh, you know, developable lot for this kind of development. The second point I'd like to make is that, because the T station, um, you know, is gonna be activated, we are within a certain mile radius. Our, the last town plan we had was, um, he seemed pretty plugged in, and he was filling the planning board in for well over six months to a year, about how we have to change zoning in the town, a certain percent, we don't have to actually have anything built, but the state is going to mandate that percentage of the property in town, uh, become available for multifamily housing, uh, which means basically greater density. Right now, our town is, is, is so antiquated and behind the times, and I know a lot of folks might say, great, that's what I like. You know, and I like that too, I like driving out to the north part of town, and driving by the farms, the apple, which is, I live in that general vicinity, and it's beautiful, but you can't sit stagnant, um, forever as a town, um, you know, you could, there in theory, right? Um, but, every year, uh, health insurance that we pay as a town, um, you should look at the numbers, it's incredible, how many millions, um, pensions go up, health insurance goes up. Um, you know, everybody gets, uh, cost of living increases, that kinda thing, so, and everything costs more money. And we are, as a town, are going to burst, and I've heard this, and if you watch selectmen's meeting, you're, you're watching, you know, the chairman, the select board is on top of this, and he, he says, eventually, this, the town will not be able to afford itself without a proposition two and a half override, and I can guarantee you that will never float in town. Whether you think your taxes, you're, you're comfortable paying your taxes, I heard somebody make that statement, I can tell you that, I've, I was born and raised in this town, I've lived here my entire life, so I know a lot of people, and I'm telling you, nine and a half out of ten say our taxes are crazy high compared to other towns, and they are. And people are tired of their taxes being raised every year, and the town has no choice, we need new development, we need new ideas on how to bring more development into the town, whether that's business, commercial, residential, our bylaws are antiquated, the town, the state is gonna force something on us, and we, we will have no choice. This bylaw is being proposed, I'm gonna say it in this way, it's, it's simply propaganda being floated out there on social media from what people are informing, I'm not a social media guy. Um, this bylaw is proposed to be, to replace a bylaw that already exists, you need to understand this. You go to section three point three, dot one, Residence A, District RA, and you go to section B, and you scroll down to number seven, our bylaws allow multifamily housing for elderly fifty-five and older, or as allowed in the master law, chapter forty B. This is not a forty B, forty B will be something, if somebody wants to bring forty B, Mr. White can do that, you know, he has a right. If, if you limit his option, someday he may have no choice, because he pays huge taxes on a lot of land. Forty B, we have no, uh, controls of town whatsoever, for whatever they determine, whatever, uh, bylaws block the window. Bylaws do not count, uh, for anything under forty B. This is not a forty B, this is to replace that section of the bylaw that we already have with fifty-five and older. That bylaw, what I read to you, is one sentence, that's all it is, there are no criteria, they don't have to come to the planning board, they don't have to show that they're building a proper, uh, road width to get into the property, they have proper turnaround for fire apparatus, proper building separations, they can put in as tight as billing code allows, they can put as many units as they want on a fifty acre parcel. This bylaw actually has all kinds of restrictions, you can have a hundred acre parcel, but you can only use thirty acres to do this. The density proposed at three units per acre is so low, go, before you complain and, and say this is gonna change the whole town, go study the other bylaws in other towns, this is something that's instituted in all the other towns, because what you're getting is, the idea is, if you got thirty acres, and you're allowed to do so many units, um, the idea is to cluster them together and leave a bunch of open space around it. Then you have a, a tight-knit community, people of around the same age, they, they want, people will buy into this, okay? I, I've lived in town my whole life, do I wanna own a house and mow the lawn and trim the bushes for the rest of my life? No, I'd love to get out of here in the wintertime and maybe sell my house and maybe make an equal swap for another house, like that. Sure, somebody will buy this house, and maybe they'll have kids, but that's the evolution of, of growth in the town. Our schools were built twenty years ago, they were improved for such a, a greater, greater amount of children than we have in the schools now. We have the classroom sizes for expansion, but we're not proposing that. I'd much rather see something like this move forward than, let's just keep building roads and building houses, well, those big houses that you see going up in Mayville, it's, they have a lot of kids, and you're gonna get more and more kids in the system, I don't see how this hurts the school system. The theory that was laid out there, true, it could happen, yes, I sell my house, somebody comes in, they have three kids. But, you know, you, you can't just sit here and do nothing, and we don't even have multifamily housing in the town of Cushinget. You can go for a special permit for an in-law apartment, that's it, that's our multifamily housing. Go to other towns and see if they have that, no multifamily housing, it, it's, our town is so antiquated, we have to do something. To sit there and critique or criticize folks that are trying to bring a bylaw forward that, really on the surface, it's not gonna hurt the town. And you know what, I'll say this, there, there aren't that many lots in town that this, we're not gonna have an influx of fifty-five and olders all over the place. There's so, the lots of, you know, what's left in town, I, I would call not the good land, when you're looking at soils, wetlands, you go to the north part of town, you might have to put in a, a well, if you don't have public water supply, well, guess what, that well has to be a public water supply. The restrictions and, uh, and the regulations that are needed through DEP to make it a public water supply, not easy to attain, that's strike one. Then you have soil conditions, you have to look at the soil, are the soils great in Cushinget? Only a few spots in town, you know, you go Keen Road, some of, uh, you know, as you, you know, some of Pecker Road, most of it, they, you know, they were mined for, for sand and gravel. Most of the town soils are not good, and if you can't put a septic on that site, strike two. Okay, so you have to start with, do you meet a buildable lot, not a retreat lot, not a lot at the end of Hermitage or Heritage Road? And, and when you put all those, all that together, there aren't, this isn't gonna generate a lot of development. What we're trying to do is, I think, as a town, as a group, the selectmen work well with the planning board, we've all worked together, I think the selectmen are sponsoring this bill, and we support it, this board, because it makes sense. You have to have something in place, if you do nothing, guess what? I want everybody in that room to write down their names that oppose the bylaw, because I wanna contact you when the state comes down and tells us, you haven't changed any of your zoning like we asked you to, and then you're gonna start, be stuck with multifamily housing with no restrictions, never mind fifty-five and older. Somewhere in town where you, you have apartment buildings everywhere, and, you know, that's where we're gonna end up, if we don't do something. I mean, if somebody have, if people have ideas, bring them to us, we'll entertain them, we'll, you know, vet, vet them to the public hearing process, and that's what we're doing here. And I invite, you know, comments, I just, it just seems like the whole bylaw is being attacked by a select few based upon, you know, uh, social media, which, that person doesn't live in town, that person does not have. have the best interest of the town in putting those pokes. So with that, I'm just gonna end my rant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dave, I appreciate everything you said, and I think you made a lot of valid points. And again, not everybody's gonna agree, and we might have to agree to disagree. Is there anybody else out on Zoom that would have anything else to say?
Mr. Chair? Rizendis, 30 South Main Street, how you doing?
Good, Mr. Rizendis, how are you? Go ahead.
I just got a comment. I heard a question about bylaws, this bylaw is trying to get pushed through, and it just made me think of a conversation I had with the conservation agent, 'cause I asked the same question. I said, why are all these solar companies coming right down? And I thought it was a grant from the government, and he said, no. He said, well, I was a solar broker, and when I needed to get rid of dirt, I'd look at the bylaws and go to a town that didn't have a bylaw. So, I'm not saying I'm for or against this, I gotta re-threw it a little more, but at least it is protection for the town. 'Cause there isn't a bylaw. It's one sentence. So, you know, the nitty-gritty of it, you know, it's debatable, but it is a bylaw, it is a protection for the town. That's the way I would look at it. If you don't see the bylaw, don't apply. So, that's just a comment that I have, you know, from people that were asking.
Thank you, Mr. Rizendis. Is there anything, anybody else? I think we've covered quite a bit tonight. I hope we've answered some questions. Again, you might not agree with everything, but what I want you to take away from this is, a lot of what Mr. Hinckley said, the selectmen, what Mr. DeViglin said, Mr. Rizendis, there is nothing in the books now. Somebody comes in with a sharp lawyer, they get whatever they want. Whatever they want. And we have no control.
So you're saying this bylaw that you passed is like gonna stop?
Now there are rules in place.
Yeah, I got you.
It's like, it's like saying, hey, we're gonna build this road, but there's no speed limit. Just gotta go drive. But if you build a road and throw some speed limit signs, now everybody's gonna abide by those signs. That's what this is.
Well then, yeah.
This is just so people have something to go by. Again, sorry, Mr. White, but this, the White's got 100 acres. He can't build on 100 because this won't allow it. He can only go to 30. There's rules, that's all this is. This, and again...
Okay, so like he said, I think social media blew it out of proportion.
Way out of proportion.
Way out. And I, you know, I wanna apologize for my attack.
No, no need.
You know, so that's, I think, a big part of it. He put it in perspective to me tonight.
Good, good.
I feel better about it.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
And I'm glad I met Mr. White, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, hold on, David, one second, please, introduce yourself.
I'm Kathy Murray, and I think you know that I work in the planning department as the assistant. We actually looked at this bylaw this afternoon, and there's a couple of minor tweaks we would make, but we would recommend it. It's a tight bylaw, and this is exactly what the town needs. Bylaws need to be tight, they need to be very specific, or you have problems that you're stuck with.
Thank you very much. Dave, please? Dave, you wanna say something?
He's calling fishing, I guess.
Again, is there, oh...
Well, everybody else is done, okay?
I think, I think we're good.
A lot of public hearing.
Yeah, good idea. Is there anything else before I close the public hearing? Once I close the public hearing, we can continue to discuss. Nothing else comes from the audience.
One last question for as far as wetlands. What does this allow people to take? Everyone mentioned poor soil, which I know is an issue, wetlands. What does this allow to do with wetlands? I asked Bobby, he said no more than 5,000 square feet could be relocated. I asked the building inspector, he said they could do whatever they want, move it anywhere they want, they could relocate endangered species. He said anything's okay.
Not randomly.
You can move wetlands, you can replicate 5,000 square feet. You can't replicate more than that. To replicate more than that...
Even if it was 100 acres or 30 acres.
Yeah, I don't care if it's 1,000 acres. Yeah, you can only replicate so much. And if you do wanna replicate more, it's a huge to-do, you gotta go through the Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, it's a huge, huge to-do. These two people know what I'm talking about. So, no. And all the laws stay in place, and like what Mr. DeViglin said is, we wanted to make sure that you needed 150 feet of frontage, 'cause that's what everybody else needs to build. Now, instead of maybe one, you might get four units in that one area, but you still need that same amount of frontage. The wetlands are the same. And another thing that I don't think was brought up tonight is, this is for where there's sewer and water, and where there's another location of maybe just water, but if you have to put in a septic, you have to go through, the loops, the hoops that you gotta jump through to get a septic design, or a septic system, or a perk to pass for multiple, multiple houses is extremely difficult. And like he said, this property in Cushing, I live here too, my land, terrible to perk. Not all, but a big portion is of the Cushing, very, very difficult. If you don't have water, like he said, you can't just dig a well for everybody. You're gonna have to put in a monster well where you're gonna end up almost being an entire water system yourself. All of the other, all the other boards, not, they're not, this doesn't make them exempt from that. Then these people still have to go through conservation, they gotta go through wetlands, stormwater, everything. And like Mr. Hinckley, sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Hinckley also said is, this comes in front of us, then it has to go in front of the Soil Board, Selectmen, Conservation, before anything gets approved.
In a public hearing.
In a public hearing for the town's people. Then we have the choice and the ability to say yes, no, no, can't do that, no, this gentleman doesn't want this, or it's too close, we want you to move. We have the ability to do that with this law.
And Anita Davis again, and I just wanna say this. This is a prime example, right? I'm just gonna give you Quaker Lane and Main Street. That was a 44-acre cow farm, a dairy farm. There were a lot of things buried on that land, right? They put a development in there. There's a pond there. That pond is still there. I used to drive by there, and there was turtles all the time. There's no longer any turtles. Yes, they put in blue rock, blue stone and all that, and whatever guidelines the town had. Guess what? You know what? People wanted, and you talked about the soil and the wells. That house, there's a certain house that is sold already three times since that development is made because of toxics. That's the other thing with farmland. People buried stuff that you don't know, people buried stuff behind buildings by, million-dollar homes. So let's think about that as we go on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, you can make all the laws you want, but we better do our history.
Oh, absolutely.
And this isn't, this isn't a do-all, end-all.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I said, this isn't a do-all, end-all. We can amend these things and things and tweak this thing as we want, just like we had to do, like we did with the solar bylaw. We started off with something, and we, we had, we amended it. And it's to make things a little bit more restrictive, a little bit more controlled, so that we don't have stuff right out on the street and so on and so forth. So this is, and this goes from one board to the next. In five years, we can all be off this board, you can have all new members.
I know.
But you, but you have, but they have this guideline to go by, it's in writing. It's part of the town. Other than that, if it's not, it's gonna go at the whim of the board. So this is, it's, it's, it's a way to manage things, and that's it, keep it under control.
Yeah, yeah. Some boards are more lenient than others. I like to think that this is, you know, we're looking for the town's best interest. We have engineers, we have former engineers, we have a lot of very well-educated people on this board. I don't want the town to think that this is being rushed, it was actually looked at very, very closely by a lot of eyes. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'm sorry, I'm coming back with more comments.
Yeah, Dave.
A lot of, what Steve said was correct, and in the bylaw, there are, there's a paragraph about all departments that are involved in any permitting, you know, including Board of Selectmen, Sewer Commissioners, Water Commissioners, Highway Department, Fire Chief, Police Chief, it goes on and on. It's set up so that you're not gonna get a development done quickly or easily without every set of eyes that the town has on the project. So that's number one. Number two, I just wanna further iterate, reiterate, and the, if you, if you're in the north part of town, you gotta put a well in for your project. It's gonna be a public water supply well, approved by the state, monitored by the state extensively, and that, that changes the setback in the septic from 100 feet for a conventional lot. I think it's, it changes it up to 500 feet. So they gotta find a spot where they can put the well where it's, it's greater than 500 feet from other people's septics. And then they gotta put a septic on the site that's greater than 500 feet from the well. Not easy to do. The septic, I know there was a, somebody asked, I thought somebody brought something up, it would be required to be a denatification system, because when you, when you're talking about multiple homes on, especially, say, say you have 10 units, you want to have a denat化 system, not only for the environment, for the long-term capability of the system. I am on the board to help, and I am telling you on record that that's what I would require, and I believe my fellow board members would concur with that statement. And lastly, I'd just leave it at this, that somebody brought up the stormwater, I mean, the solar companies, and somebody brought up the point of looking into, you know, town bylaws, that's what developers do. If anybody's paying attention, our town was run over from a permitting and perspective for solar farms throughout town. I think on record, we have like 20 of them permitted. If I'm not accurate, I'm within one or two. And out of the, out of the 20, you know, maybe a third or a half have been built, and the others are plodding along, trying to get ever so us to give them the permits. The reason there was such a massive influx is because our bylaws were so weak, basically, they came in, the state says you can't deny solar projects. I wasn't on the planning board for all of those filings for solar, but once the company's caught wind, you go to Cushing, it has vast amounts of land, and you can just get, really readily, easily get through their bylaws. This planning board, through our last town planner who's now since left us, put together a very stringent set of guidelines for future, it'll be, you will see solar farms disappear from, we've got on our fill of solar farms. And those that have permits that expired because they couldn't get their connection to the grid, they will have to come back with revised plans, and when we say significant changes, we're talking about 100-foot setbacks, the property lines, several hundred feet off the road, a lot of things that were put in place that, you know, should've in hindsight done, been done early on, but who knew? You know, who had the foresight to know that we would get hit with 20 solar farms? So we replaced a solar bylaw with a new solar bylaw that will actually protect residents in the town. That's exactly what we're trying to do here by endorsing it.
Excuse me, are we talking about solar farms? Are we talking about housing? Dave, Dave, some people wanna go home tonight, you're probably in your recliner.
Can I please?
Dave, are you in your recliner?
Mr. White, Mr. White.
Well, listen.
I understand.
He's going on and on about solar farms.
I understand.
We're not talking about what we're talking about.
He's making a point.
I know.
I understand, Mr. White.
I'm making a point too.
I understand, you'll have, you'll have your turn. You'll have your turn.
My point, my point is, with the solar, we, we're making, we're taking out a bylaw that consists of one sentence where the town is not protected, and replacing it with a pretty comprehensive bylaw that will protect the town. It's the exact same thing we do with solar. Somebody made the point, I'll try to bring it up and reiterate. It's the most important part of the night, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Very well said.
Rick?
I'll have to state for that I, oh, how should I put, I'm, there's, there's so much here. Excuse me, plus allergies with stuff drawn down the back of my throat. There's, there's, this is a complicated issue. There is no question about that. I mean, septic systems, water supplies, housing density, you know, farms, retreat lots, it's, and then the really hard part is the financial implication. I don't have any answers. All I have, I do have a couple of questions that I really think should be looked at a little closely. One of them is, there needs to be, I really believe there should be a detailed financial analysis done to see whether this truly is going to be a tax benefit or a tax burden to the town. I don't know that I've ever seen one done, but I think that's a really important question. Most people are driven by financial need. To Mr. White's point, my father owned four building lots in town that if it wasn't for the property taxes, they would still be unbuilt on. But those four lots with no houses on them cost $9,000 a year to keep. Couldn't do it. There's houses there now with the 1.1 children per new house, or whatever the number is in, in town right now. So, you know, financial, financial things do drive a lot of stuff when it comes to deciding what to do with your land or other people's, for that matter. Just in terms of, of density, you know, with water and sewer, three units per acre. Well, right now in the central business district, or the central village district, there's 10,000 square foot lots. That's four lots per acre. So, three lots per acre is not some tremendously dense area, certainly for the central part of town. Now I'm gonna look at the other, the other dimensional regulation, which says, without water and sewer, you have to have 15 acres, but you can do three units per acre. That's 45 housing units versus if it were five retreat lots, five units. I don't know what the financial implication of that is. Certainly with the retreat lots, there are going to be more children going to school, which is one of the biggest costs in town. I wish Mr. Hinckley were still here, he's got a much better handle on the, the financial part of it than I do. Schools are close to half the cost of, of running this town. It's a huge number.
More than half, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's more than half.
More than half.
Like, again, it was big. I don't want, I don't wanna exaggerate anything here that I'm going to say. I, I believe, Mr. Hinckley told me at one time that the cost per student was around $23,000 a student per year. I'd like to ask him, and I believe that's the number. It's a huge number. So how many children go to school out of a facility is, is critical to the financials of this town. I am a little concerned about this. I mean, I've been on the planning board and been in town, I've been on the planning board off and on for the last 40 years. I've seen what were all woods around me, other people's lands entitled to do it, they're all subdivisions now. So there's 200 lots where there were, where there were just woods before. Financial impact on the town was tremendous, because again, when you start looking at, and the number 40 years ago was 1.1 children per new housing that came on the market, new residential house. So it's, that part of it's huge, but that's only part of the story. To get back to this one, it would seem that if I've got 15 acres of land in the north end of town, and I could look at five retreat lots or 45 housing units, this is a real financial, there's some real financial impact on my decision. Can I make more money on 45 housing units than I can on... Can I make more money on 45 housing units than I can on five? Don't know. I don't know. You have to run the financials to get to that answer. I am concerned, and I don't think that even with that in place, there's going to be anything that's immediately obvious or immediately happens. 20 years from now, I don't know. That's a different story. You know, there's a lot of things that have happened since I was a youngster in my 30s to now that I would not have foreseen back then. The other, so again, all I have is a question. I really can't tell you whether this is financially good or financially bad for the town. I will say on the surface of it, it seems like it has the potential to drive more higher density housing to the north end of town where things aren't quite so busy. In terms of trying, the policing part of, it sounds awful, but I mean, trying to keep kids out of a development, grandchildren, babies, single mothers, I don't want to even get into that story. I will tell you one of my own horror stories. I am, I do own, maintain and Mr. Fixit for an over 55 facility in this town. And I'm just going to tell you one recent thing that happened. A number of years ago, a woman came and she wanted to rent a two-bedroom unit for me. Solid financials, wasn't jumping around living in new places from, you know, every year or two, which is kind of a red flag. It seemed fine. I'm going to jump, I'm going to pass all the story that would make for a good story at a bar some night for an hour or so and just jump to the end. I had up to eight people living in that two-bedroom unit. There were mattresses all over the place. It looked like a dump. I believe my comment to her was, this looks like a slumlord runs this place. It's disgusting. One of those eight people was a grandchild. She had been in the facility for a while and then got older and left. Then she came back to live with her grandmother with a young child, as a young single mother. It was an ordeal to get that person or number of persons, however you want to look at it, out of the facility. If you want to go into a court in front of a judge as an evil landlord and try to get a single mother evicted, good luck. Good luck. It may eventually happen. I don't know how many years it's going to take, but I did finally get them out, but it wasn't me. That place was in such bad condition that the Department of Child and Family Services had started an investigation there as to whether that was a fit place for that young child to live. I raised the rent significantly. I never saw a penny of it, but between that and the pressure from DCF, they finally left. And it's going to take me many thousands of dollars.
I hate to interrupt.
I'm sorry, but one of the questions brought up was how do you enforce it? And that's a valid question considering the financial impact on town. On town, and I tried to keep it short. Like I said, this evolved over six years. They are gone. The place is a mess. But they are gone. It is difficult to enforce that. It is hard to tell, it is going to be hard to go into any system as a landlord or as part of a condominium unit with a covenant. Now we're talking about supposedly older people that don't have a lot of money to take other parts of the community to court. And they're going to be in the same boat. They're going in front of a judge saying, we want all these under 55 people out there. It's not easy, that's all. Like I said, I don't have any answers, Mark.
Okay.
That's just, those are just my comments. You can take what you want from them. By the way, I am also a certified or a licensed water system operator by the state because the place does have to have a permit as a public water supply. And it's not easy to do that and it's expensive and is a grandfathered unit. There are a lot of things out there to prevent just wholesale development at 45 units on 15 acres, and it's not going to happen overnight. How much of it is, I don't have the answer. I'll stop.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before I close the public portion of this meeting, I get a motion to close the public portion of this meeting. Motion closed. Can I get a second?
Second.
Call of favor, roll call.
Steve Boucher, member?
Mark Francois, yes. Brian DeChamps, yes.
Rick Ellis, yes.
Dean Twigg, yes.
Thank you. There were a lot of points made here tonight. There was a lot of information put out there. Again, the only thing I want to finish off with is, don't believe everything you read on social media. Please. There's no ill intent with this article. You have my word that everything that we did for this is for the betterment of the majority of this town. It will help protect this town. I will entertain a motion to endorse this article, original article with amendments by the planning board and the board of selectmen. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to endorse this Article 12 as, which is, ooh, make the motion to, to, excuse me, there it is. I'll make a motion to endorse the original article, Article 12, as written as.
By the planning board.
By the planning board and board of selectmen.
It's okay. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Call of favor, roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
Point of order, question?
Please.
Before a vote's taken, Mr. Boucher said the original, the original article was revised multiple times.
Yeah, the amendments, the original article with amendments.
With amendments, okay.
With amendments.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, with amendments by the planning board and the board of selectmen. We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes. Brian DeChamps, yes.
Rick Ellis, I'm going to have to abstain from this. There could be a potential financial interest of my business in this. Probably not, but in the, for full disclosure, there might be, so I'm going to abstain from this call.
Very good. Mr. DeViglino?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That part of this meeting is finished. Moving on, site plan review, oh, wait a minute, I need a motion to open the public hearing portion of this part of the meeting for site plan for this special permit modification. I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting for site plan review and solar permit, special permit modification, solar.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
That's a second. Call of favor, roll call.
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes. Brian DeChamps, yes.
Rick Ellis, yes.
Yes, sorry, I might be a little slow with my hitting the mute, not mute, so bear with me.
Got you, got you. Okay, so a little background on this one. This is a continuation of a public hearing. At our last public hearing, I think two weeks ago, we went over the plans for Lambert Street. They went over everything. They went over their traffic report. They went over just about everything. The only issue that I recall, and anybody please correct me if I'm wrong, was the wording of the motion. I'll just open this up. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Jesse O'Donnell, an engineer with Weston and Sampson representing the project applicant tonight, St. Archibald Capital.
Okay. Is there anything new that you would like to share?
We have nothing new from the continuance from two weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody out in the audience that would like to speak regarding, oh, wait a minute, I apologize, my apologies. I'm a little off kilter here. Okay, site plan review for solar special permit modification continued. Plan entitled Lambert Street Access Road issued June 6, 2023 to process and modification for a site plan review and a special permit for a 7.5 megawatt solar array proposed by St. Carver Park Drive LLC. Engineers Weston and Sampson. The plans and according documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, partying with building on 30 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. Before I go to the audience, nothing's been changed. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Just comments. This was a previously approved solar array in regards to this board's ability to approve or disprove a solar array. I will say this, we did change our bylaw. It's modeled after another town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. What's really interesting about the attorney general's approval of that bylaw, which ours is very similar to, is the attorney general approved it, but I'm going to, this will have to be considered a paraphrase, I don't have the document in front of me. The attorney general cautioned that town not to use it as a means to prevent solar development in that town. I took it from that, that if we used the old bylaw or the new one to actually turn down a solar array, that we, that vote could be sending the town to court. And I personally am not in favor of doing something that I know is going to cost the town big money in court. God forbid, like, I have no idea how much money was spent on the quarry, but I know it was significant. I don't feel that I should be in a position to be sending the town to court for something like that. It's not that we cannot disapprove it. We can, but we run the risk of being taken to court by the developer or the solar array proponent. I'm not willing to do that. And there is an approved plan with an access location. Is it onto Park Drive or is it onto Brooks Drive? I'm bad with names.
They originally came with a proposal to go on Brooks Ave. It's off of Park Drive and Brooks Ave is off of Park Drive, correct me if I'm wrong. They originally came to us and it was approved to go through Park Drive, we didn't, excuse me, through Brooks Ave. And then we were in the middle of finalizing the Brooks Ave entrance when the proponent came to us and basically said that they're going to try a different access because they were having issues with the butters. So they basically put Park Drive, Brooks Ave on hold and now are trying to go up Lambert Street.
And when I look at the Lambert Street access, to me, the Lambert Street access utilizes pretty much the minimum amount of town road necessary to get to and from that project. I didn't put a scale on it, but substantially more footage of town road needs to be used to do the Brooks Avenue access. And it's not just a couple hundred feet. Again, I don't have the scale on me. I didn't have the ability to scale it off my computer as PDF. But because of that, I looked at, I look at right now, the Lambert Street access is actually being the preferable one because it utilizes less of the town roads, goes past fewer butters, fewer neighbors, and short of denying somebody the ability to use their property for a legally permitted use, I think it's the best place to go. And I hope that they're going to be able to get the rest of their permits to utilize that and not have to go back to Brooks Avenue.
That's what we hope.
That said, and we had a lot of discussion about this before that previous meeting, I'm going to put a motion on the table to approve the Lambert Street access as an alternative access. I can withdraw it?
No, just put that on hold. And I need to go to the public first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're going to put that motion on hold. Anybody else on the board? Dave, do you have anything to add?
I really don't. I agree Lambert Street is a better access point. I want to reiterate statements I've made in the past that the property owner has a right in this state to access his property one way or the other. I want to reiterate that this is a better option over Brooks. And if it had to go back to Brooks, I would support that as well. He has a right to get to his property one way or the other. Litigation aside, it's really none of my business as far as Brooks. So I'm good to move on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the audience. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this proposal? Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, Mark White from 41 Park Drive. Just a couple of questions. Because, Mr. Chairman, I remember the last meeting, there was something that you wanted to talk to town council about and you didn't like read it to record, and I got a copy of it, the proposed conditions regarding Brooks Ave on the back.
Yep.
And since we're talking and we're at a public meeting for Lambert Street, I don't believe that any proposed conditions mentioning Brooks Ave should be taken into vote when this public meeting is strictly for Lambert Street access.
Can I interrupt you real quick? Sure. That paper that you're holding up, which was written by their lawyer. You can throw that away. I don't care. I don't care about what their lawyer wrote. I did talk to the town administrator. We didn't go to town council with it, I'll be honest with you. We don't, we as a board don't take orders or suggestions from the developer. We don't get told what to do by the developer's lawyer. We don't get told what to do by the developer's lawyer. We make the decision and we make the motion. So if there was something brought in last meeting, that probably should never have been brought in. This was their suggestion.
Yep, okay.
That's theirs, that's theirs. I don't care. We are here. We started here with Brooks. You know, as well as I do, there's a lot of issues with Brooks.
Yes.
They've been approved. First thing we start off, they've been approved to use Brooks. Okay?
In 2001.
Correct.
Yes.
Nonetheless, they've been approved. One second. Now they came to us and they want to put Brooks aside and they want to go to Lambert.
Yes.
This board will not entertain the motion of having two openings viable at the same time. You are either going to use Brooks or you're going to use Lambert. At this moment, they're asking us to go from Brooks to Lambert. My opinion is we now put Brooks on hold and we go to Lambert. They showed us the plans. They showed us their construction plans. Everything meets code. Everything looks right. Do they have issues with other agencies and other departments? They do. That's for them to work out. As far as this board is concerned, Lambert Street meets all criteria for access to their property.
Okay. My understanding, all I'm trying to make clarification, my understanding, I'm going to go back to the April 6 meeting when they took Brooks off the map.
Okay.
And I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth because you can pull up the tape, which I did. And Mr. De Vigney said Brooks is off the map. We're no longer considering it. And then he was very clear telling St. Carver and the audience that if Brooks got put back on the map, that it'd have to be start an amendment over and go back through public hearing, green cards, and so on and so forth, because.
And you are absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anybody else? Just one second.
Just have a few questions. Could someone explain the MEPA process? Because there was a community outreach, but I wasn't sure on the process, what the process exactly is.
If I'm not mistaken, correct me, gentlemen, if I'm wrong, but the MEPA process is more through conservation than it is through planning? Dave, can you help me out on this one?
Yes, sir, I can. The MEPA process, they're charged with one simple task. And there's a specific timeframe attached to that. So they take comment from a litany of agencies. They take public comment. And then their charge is really to determine whether an environmental impact report is required for the project. And they will issue a, something called a certificate once the timeline has ended. I'm sure the consultants who are on, either on Zoom or there in person, I don't know. But they'll be able to tell you, you know, roundabout when that timeline, that date is. Because they're, unlike other state agencies who can take forever to permit something, they actually have a specific timeline. And they may ask a lot of questions and a lot of information along the way beyond the public comment period or the public comment meeting that they had. And they accept information along the way. And then they will determine whether environmental impact report is required. And if they do so, then the process gets very intense and convoluted for the applicant. If they decide an environmental impact report is not required. Now, I know that the rules have changed, so the consultant for the, for the applicant can probably delve into a little bit more. It's even more complicated now than it was, say, two or three years ago due to other factors that have come into play, considered environmental justice communities and things like that. So there will be a cutoff at that point. If they get past that point, then they're, they're done if they don't have to have environmental impact report. So I would, Mr. Chairman, ask whoever the consultant is this evening that can comment further on that. It's a good question because it, it will enlighten the neighbors as to where they are and, and, you know, what, what the end, you know, the end game or the date is for them to be able to move on from the project at, at that point.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Before I have.
But again, one quick thing, the planning board has nothing to do with it. That was one question.
Thank you. Before I have Weston and Sampson come up, is there anything else?
So at the last meeting, they said that there were going to be five trucks per day. Is that right?
Max. And that was something that I found out, yeah. And that was something that was agreed upon through conservation. They agreed to three trucks per day for a maximum of five trucks per day. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, and only between certain hours, which is on our traffic study. So it doesn't impact the schools and the buses.
So is that going to be a condition on the permit?
I think it's a condition on the conservation's special permit, yes. That's, I found this, this was something that was brought up. And I found out through the, the conservation agent. They had a meeting with Sampson and Weston and Sampson, and they made all kinds of criteria, which they agreed to.
Now, what about the road? Who's going to repair the road?
You brought that up the last time you were here. I can try to find out some information on that for you. At this moment, I am not in a position to demand that they, if they, like I said, if they are moving something or they, they rip up the road and near it right in front of Lambert or, you know, somehow a machine falls and it destroys the road, they're 100% at fault and they'd fix it. But now just from wear and tear of vehicles going over it, your vehicle goes over it, their vehicles go over it, Brooks, Brooks, DeBrook Estates vehicles go over it, school bus goes over it. I understand that, but I'm not in a position right now to mandate that they're going to repave the road because they're putting in a solar farm. If that's something that's concerning to you, as you can go talk to the selectmen there or the DPW and have them give you an answer on that one.
So we'd have to prove that it's them, even though it's normal vehicle traffic and they're having commercial trucks going there.
And so it's DeBrook Estates, which is right down the street.
And they, they, for, in support of that, Mark. I mean, a subdivision, construction and the construction of the houses in that subdivision very easily generates three to five trucks a day over a lot longer period than the four to six months that they're talking about for the solar farm.
It's just a shame that we have to deal with a commercial operation and we get no mitigation, nothing at all. What were the hours of operation for the, for the trucks?
Trucks, it's in the. Deliveries will occur on weekdays and will occur within the following time windows. 7:00 AM to 7:30 AM, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Efforts will be made to perform deliveries between 9:00 and 3:00 with occasional deliveries in the 7:00 to 7:30 and 4:00 to 6:00 window.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Can you start off by explaining the MEPA process, please?
Yeah, absolutely. And it is a good question. So in the most basic sense, the MEPA process is a state level permitting process. So we have the local, state, and federal permitting processes to go through. The MEPA is the most intensive of the state permitting processes. Typically, a MEPA involvement, if you go through the two tiers of the MEPA involvement, which is the ENF, the environmental notification form, and then the EIR, which some projects also trigger, which this one will, that's about a six month effort typically, more or less. It can be as little as four, as much as nine, depending on, on the project. But the MEPA process is triggered when a project has, one, a state involvement, meaning the project triggers some sort of state entity's approval, whether it's DOT or DEP or some other one. And in addition to that, the project triggers a MEPA threshold. And you can just Google MEPA thresholds and there's a whole webpage that talks about all of them. There's so many categories and different ways that a project can rise to meet a MEPA threshold. This proposed project meets the MEPA threshold of just proposing to disturb more than 5,000 square feet of wetlands. So because the project proposes to do that, we have to go through the Mass DEP for a 401 water quality cert. So that's a state involvement. And then because we're triggering the 5,000 square feet of wetlands, that's the threshold. So those two in tandem trigger MEPA involvement. And we go through the first tier of MEPA involvement, which is an environmental notification form, which, which we just submitted last week. And to one of the, to one of the members' points about recent complications with the MEPA process in recent years involving environmental justice communities, because our project is within a one mile radius of a nearby environmental justice community, which is also a map that you can just look at online to see where the different environmental justice communities are in the town, that triggers the second tier of MEPA involvement, which is the EIR, which kind of lengthens the process to that six to nine months. For this project, we're envisioning something closer to six months for, for the entirety of the MEPA involvement. I think that generally gives an overview of why and what. If there's any other curiosities, I can certainly describe more.
So the original project wasn't large enough to trigger it? It was, it's the access that triggered it, the MEPA?
The, the additional proposed wetland disturbance in support of the Lambert Street access does impact, I think, about 3,600 square feet of wetlands, which sent us over the 5,000 square foot threshold.
So they already had some in the project that they were going to replicate? But it was under the five?
Correct.
Any other questions? Is there anybody on Zoom that has any other questions? Great. Is there anything else you would like to say?
I'm all set.
Can I ask one question? How many acres this is involved?
Yeah, the solar array itself is about 22 acres approximately. And the, the limit of disturbance, the overall project's proposed disturbance is about 34 acres.
32 acres. And wetlands?
The project proposes to alter above 5,000 square feet of wetlands. It's between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet.
I thought, I thought this town said they were going to protect wetlands.
There's a, there is, so there's a bylaw. There's a law that states you can, you can put a road in or you can, you can, if you're building something, you can, you can disturb up to 5,000 square feet. That's for them, for solar, for, for you, for MEPA, anyway. So they're going a bit over that for the access road.
Right. And then.
But besides that, the rest of it is all.
And then they don't take responsibility for the trucking, for the endurance of the roads that our taxes paid for? What kind of taxes is this guy paying for? To, to, you know, what is, what is he giving our town? Anything? Is our town getting anything from them?
This is a project.
Private, right.
It's a private piece of property.
Right. So these guys come in, right?
These guys. These guys rent a piece of property from somebody else.
Oh, they rent, so they are paying taxes?
Yes. Yes. Oh, this, and this is, and this is not only taxes, this is commercial taxes, which is a higher tax basis than residential taxes.
Okay.
So solar projects do generate taxes for the, for the town at a higher tax rate than residential.
See, to see wetlands get.
Wetlands will not be the issue. This whole project, very, very minute area, is being touched. The solar array itself is all in upland area. So, and this wasn't even mentioned, but I just want you to take this in concern. Upland area. If the owner of this property wants, he gets access, he fills it with houses. Fills it with houses, fills it with kids, fills it with a lot of traffic coming in and out on a daily basis. This, once it gets done, is it a headache for six months? Yes. Once it gets done, it's crickets back there. Nothing.
No, it's not crickets. But we, it's a whole different discussion with me on that. Let's not go there. Go ahead, Rob.
And Rob, Rob Bones, 1280 Main. I have an issue with you keep comparing this to housing development or anything that comes up. They could do housing. They, if they, if that was easy, they would have done it a long time ago. Because I walked that 10 years ago with conservation. There was water issues, there's all kinds of things that prevent them from putting housing. Otherwise, that's what they would have done a long time ago. Is this under the current solar regulations or the older one?
The older one.
So these changes involving wetlands and everything are not significant enough to make that apply into the new permitting?
No.
What is the threshold?
This wetland is big enough, this wetland problem is big enough to go through MEPA. We're just going to make them jump through crazy hoops and they're not even guaranteed to get through.
But what, what is the threshold to, to warrant someone to go under the new regulation?
Is if, one is if their permit expires, which theirs, I don't think has yet. And if it does come, if the permit is about to expire, the proponent can come in and ask for an extension to that permit. We, as a board, can approve that extension or deny. We approve, we can give it a year or two, whatever we decide. That's actually one of the articles, is to give it a timer. That's one of the articles that's going to be presented Monday night. So to give you a little bit of background, originally it was two years mandated by the state. Then the state turned around during COVID and changed it from two years to three years. And if it was to be renewed, it was for three years. So we're putting an article, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I don't know the article number, but we're making an amendment to our bylaw, our solar bylaw. Again, you can add, you can change bylaws. We're adding an amendment to the, to the solar bylaw that gives us, one, we go back to two years. And when it comes time to renew, we can renew six months, a year, up to two years. Gives us the authority to decide what's best. And, and to give you a little bit of background, the criteria that we use is if a solar company, or any company, a solar company's been actively trying to get in and do something, then they usually get an extension. If a solar company's been sitting on their hands for the last three years and hasn't done anything, they're not going to get it.
So there's evidence that there's been work done?
By him sitting here in front of us, he's been, this would have been done by now if it wasn't for issues that had arisen.
COVID. COVID. Set everything back.
COVID, Brooks Ave, there's other issues that have happened. These, these people have actually been very, very diligent. They've been very open and back and forth with us compared to some other companies that we've been dealing with. And this would have been done by now if it wasn't for certain aspects. We have other companies that have, were permitted and haven't done anything. We haven't seen them, nothing.
So what number is this? Because you said there was 20 permits. Is that right?
Mr. De Vigney said there was approximately 20 permits. To be honest with you, he's right. There is approximately 20.
So what permit is this?
I do not know the number off the top of my head.
Is this your first solar farm in the Cushing? How many do you do in a Cushing?
Mine, yes, it's my first.
This is your first?
If, if, if you don't, if you don't mind, there are substantial legal questions involved as to whether they are not going to be able to proceed as they have been permitted to do so. They have a, from my understanding from the lawyers, they have a very strong case that irregardless of what happens from here on out, whether it's, you know, they've got to secure MEPA, they may have to get an Army Corps of Engineers permit, as long as they are diligently proceeding forward, my understanding is that existing permit can still be utilized. And again, that's my, my understanding from the legal people on their side and the legal people on the town side. That's the best I can do for you on that question at this time. If they stop doing anything. If they stop doing anything, that's a different story. But so far, they have not. And do you have your interconnect permit?
I'd just like to make, just defer to the client on that matter, to the applicant, just to make sure that I'm.
We do.
Speaking correctly. Okay.
You do?
Yes.
They have their interconnect permit, they've got their building permit, and they're trying to do it. That, I believe, or again, based on the two sets of lawyers, that's enough activity to keep the permit alive. And if MEPA holds them up for five years, then the permit is still alive, the way I understand what the lawyers on both sides have said.
You don't have the building.
You don't have a building permit?
They have a special permit.
All right, then, well, I think that's said back. But they're still pursuing the MEPA process. So they are progressing diligently.
Right now, they, words out of stance, though, for us, they got a lot they're doing behind the scenes to get their conservation permit.
Also, conservation's on this. Big time.
I want to say one other thing, too. Even if they were subject to the new regulations, there's still a solar array back there. I mean, the Attorney General has come out and said to the town.
I don't care about the Attorney General.
But I do.
I don't know why? Because we run this country. Us people in this room, we run it. We run them. They don't run us.
Okay.
We have, like it or not, the town has to abide by the laws of the law.
What about, what about, what have we done? What have we done? We support China every time we.
We're not getting into this.
Let's go there. Let's go there.
Is there anything else regarding?
We wanna go home tonight.
I wanna go home.
Is there anything else? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for.
So move.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor, roll call?
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes.
Ray DeChambe, yes.
Rick Alas, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Thank you.
Say your name, Dave. Just say your name.
Dave DeVigene, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Again, I'm gonna reiterate for you, Mr. Moore. Lambert Street, nothing can happen at Brooks until they come back in front of us.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to amend the conditions of the approval to change the entrance from Brooks Avenue to Lambert Street from the previous approved plan. If the proponent fails to get Lambert Street approval by various other agencies, they would have to come back in front of the planning board to amend the conditions of approval of the special permit back to Brooks Avenue with a public hearing.
We have a motion. Can I get a second? A second, Dave. All in favor, roll call?
Steve Boucher, yes.
Mark Francois, yes. Ray DeChambe, yes.
Rick Alas, yes.
Dave DeVigene, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Current planning, there's none. Long-range planning, there is none. No other businesses come in in the last 48 hours.
Yes, right?
And the next week is the date of November 16. Are we getting a motion to close this meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
Steve Boucher, aye.